We're talking about hiring another full-time DPW person, which I fully understand. There was nothing in our package as far as what the wage is going to be.
They don't, he's not, neither one of them need insurance.
It started out at, they start out at eighteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're not getting insurance, so. So I would like to make a motion to recommend to hire Gary Krin. Krin?
Are we getting it right?
Yes.
Okay. As full-time DPW labor effective immediately.
And I would like to make a second there.
Okay, is the motion in a second, discussion? Here we go. Pat?
Moore?
Yes.
Slenz?
Yes.
Walworth?
Yes.
I forgot Saman.
Yes.
Sorry. McAdoo?
Yes.
Congratulations. Your time is up.
My brand new husband.
Molly.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm the street administrator, so I haven't had a chance to meet you, so I'm really excited that you're coming on board.
Okay, item D, recommendation to hire Anthony, how do you pronounce his last name? Is he here?
Siklo.
Siklo.
Yeah, part-time labor effective immediately. Sherry, you might want to discuss this before we really get rolling here, why this has come up.
As President McAdoo indicated, there were several good applicants who were very fortunate. We had nine applicants altogether. It was, it come down to a tough decision on some of them. This gentleman here, as our street administrator pointed out, these people do not need any of our benefits, so this is going to save the village quite a bit of money. And plus, they're starting out at a lower rate than what the current one that had just left us was making. But I talked with, we who interviewed them, which was myself and Doug and the street administrator Sherry, we didn't want to, we want council to consider offering a part-time position to Anthony Siklo because there are many times that, just for safety purposes, that they need three people out on the road. Is that not true, Matt? For doing things out on the road for safety purposes?
Two's, two works, I mean.
Yeah, but safety purposes, I thought you had told me that it always took three people to do some things.
Do like their crack ceiling takes three. We do the ceiling cracks, it's been a while.
But anyways, this gentleman, as you can see, read his experience, and he's retired from the Jesse County Road Commission. I just think he'd have a lot to bring to this village with his skills and abilities. He's willing to work part-time. It's just... We would like you to consider hiring him part-time.
I guess I'm trying to understand why it is that, you know, we've had two DPW people for years now. Why all of a sudden we're going to hire a third DPW person?
No, you don't have to, this is a choice.
I understand, and I'm not saying that we don't necessarily need to do this, but again, this second one doesn't have to be done right now. I'd like to see where we're at with budget, I'd like to see how this is going to affect the budget. I just, again, not that I'm opposed to it, again, it's just the wrong, wrong time to be doing this. We're going to be approving a budget in June, there's no reason why this one can't wait.
Well, I don't want to lose this guy, he's got a lot of qualifications, we're saving a lot of money, not having to pay for insurance.
But we're still paying a wage over and above what we were paying them.
He's part-time?
Yeah.
Is he bad? Oh, no, Eric was making.
For this position, we're not.
Well, by hiring the both, Keith is correct, we'll be spending approximately...
Overall, but not...
Overall, seventy-seven dollars a week or more.
That's my only point, is that it shouldn't be on the budget. Sherry, this is a candidate that, the Pacer, he had experience with...
Oh, yeah, he, well, yes, he's a civil engineer, I mean, basically, I mean, he's got a...
Yeah, he worked on Jesse County. He helped us with the Pacer.
Yeah, he has, he has an amazing background.
He's a surveyor, he's done all kinds of things, it's just, he has a plethora of knowledge.
Right, he lives outside the village.
It's only part-time, I mean, we can always pull back.
I think it's...
We don't feel we need it.
Can I just ask?
We're looking at twenty hours, fifteen hours, what are we looking at?
Twenty-four.
It's going to be part-time, so.
Well, we had three people until, what, five years ago?
No, you had, you used to have three full-time people, one part-time person and a gardener in 2010, yeah.
And we've trimmed them back.
Correct.
Matt, how would the part-time work be scheduled or be an on-call thing?
He would be scheduled, three days a week.
Are you on board with this?
Yes, I mean, for some things you do need three people, I mean, it's not going to be all the time.
I don't think so.
I mean...
Sorry, put your hands up.
I don't know, I'm not going to comment right now, I just...
I mean, yeah, his resume looks amazing, like you said, he knows about roads, asset management, all that good stuff. I'm a little bit on board with Keith that it could wait, is he going anywhere?
I don't know.
So...
No, I mean, it's up to you guys.
Well, it was my understanding when we discussed it that there, besides working with the rest of the crew, that there would be duties assigned, that we just don't assign people duties regularly to empty trash cans and pick up trash. It's kind of wouldn't get a chance to do it.
That was my question. Well, he has things to do.
I'm sorry.
Yes, there's garbage cans, there's the outside, the small details, you know, we want our village to look nice.
Do you guys want to hold off on this and discuss it during the budget? Workshop, that's fine.
I think that's what I'm hearing, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion just to table this until the first budget workshop, just possibly one month.
Okay.
And can you let him know that?
There's a motion and support, any comments?
I disagree, but...
Pardon me?
I said I don't agree, but...
Well, Pat?
I'm sorry, who supported that?
I made a motion, Keith supported.
All right. Moore?
No.
Slenz?
Yes.
Saman?
No.
Walworth?
Yes.
McAdoo?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend to hire Anthony Siklo...
Siklo.
Siklo as part-time labor effective immediately.
Support? Support?
You support him?
He's supporting.
Doug's supporting.
Pat?
Did I hear another support? Sorry.
I called it.
Okay. Comment from here.
Ready?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Slenz?
No.
Saman?
Yes.
Walworth?
No.
McAdoo?
Yes. Motion carried. You contact him, Sherry? Let me take care of the paperwork. Okay, next, item C is Resolution 2022-06, performance resolution for municipalities, and this is required by the Michigan Department of Transportation.
It's just a housekeeping resolution. For, required by the Michigan Department of Transportation for purposes of issuing to a municipality an individual permit for use of state highway right-of-way. This would allow our DPW or our professional engineers, way trim to be able, if they needed to do, pull a permit if they had to work somehow or some way on the M dot-owned main roads, like M-15. It's just housekeeping.
And I will make a motion to pass the resolution for municipalities required by the Michigan Department of Transportation.
I'll second.
Is the motion in a second, pass the resolution 2022-06, comments? Well, I'm sorry, you do this, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Resolution passed. D, authorize recommended upgrade of IT right software for internal security purposes, the amount of $1,776.
I'll make a motion to authorize the upgrade of IT right software, or excuse me, IT right software for internal security purposes in the amount of $1,776.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second, comments? I'd like to make one because we've known that our facility is, how should we say it? Hasn't been secure as it should have been. And we had an incident here just in the last month.
Couple days ago, right?
Couple days ago. And this is an upgrade, and Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong, $500 is this, is normal yearly?
The $576 is our normal yearly maintenance fee.
Right.
The $1,200 is the actual upgrade, but we're just, we're paying for the yearly.
Yeah, we're also paying for our yearly maintenance fee, if you want to call it that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Pat, rule call please.
Moore?
Yes.
Slenz?
Yes.
Saman?
Yes.
Walworth?
Yes.
McAdoo?
Yes. Thank you, motion is approved.
Okay, item 10D, approve permit for and set fee for food truck applicants.
Can I make a motion on this? I'd like to make a motion to table this until a council member can speak to others and possibly adjust the permit to what would be more acceptable and integrate more ideas and suggestions into the permit before we put it out for approval. And I'd be willing to be that council member.
I'll second.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that. There's a motion and a second, and how should we phrase this, to postpone this?
For further information.
Pardon me?
For further information.
Further information, keep the simple. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
So you guys do understand all we're asking for is just a copy of what you pay, just the paperwork, that's all we want.
We can cover that at the end.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
F, set proposed 2022-2023 budget workshop dates as presented. Now...
I threw some dates in there, you obviously can change them if you want. I've got for May 5th, May 17th, May 31st, June 2nd. Normally it takes about three, but it could take four.
I personally cannot do Tuesdays nights.
Okay.
Thursdays and Wednesdays.
Okay.
I can do Tuesdays.
So, how about anybody else? Anybody got a problem with moving the Tuesdays to Wednesdays? Or Tuesdays to Thursdays? Anybody?
I don't have the consistency of Thursdays.
Would you like Thursdays, anybody? So let's move the 17th to the 19th?
Move the 17th to the 19th?
And we'll move the 31st to the 2nd of June, which is where that's at, actually, 2nd of June. So that gives us three, but if we needed to, you literally legally have till the end of the month. So if we don't get it done before the 13th, we still have till the end of the month. So we could have a special meeting to adopt the budget if we needed to. But we could get it done in three meetings and still have it available to approve by the council on the 13th. So do you want to set the three, or you want to set another one? Or just go with the three right now, we can always set another one.
Three.
Three, yeah.
I'm sorry, so which three are we talking about?
We're talking about May 5th.
Yep.
May 19th.
May 19th. June 2nd.
ESP, you already had that on the other side. I mean, you already had it written in.
So I'd like to make a motion to set the new proposed dates for 2022-23 budget workshops as just amended of May, sorry, May 1st, May 19th, and June 2nd.
A second motion.
All right. A motion and a second to set the dates as presented, discussion? Here we go. Rule call. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is adopted.
Now go to the next, the last one.
Pardon me?
We have the last for those.
Yeah, your last one, G, set transportation asset management plan workshops.
Again, well, it looks like I've got those set for Thursdays, pretty good. I've got the 21st of April, I've got the 26th of May, and I've got the 23rd of June, and the 21st of July. I don't know if you want to go out that far, it's up to you guys.
No, I think they'll work. It'll be just rolling then.
So those are my proposed dates, if you guys have any troubles, you can change it.
No, those sound good to me. Well, I'll make a motion to set transportation asset management planned workshops for, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, is the motion and a second to set the dates as presented, discussion? Here we go, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, motion is passed as presented. Okay, this brings us to the last public comment section. This public comment may speak on anything that you would like to. We would ask that you hold the time limit, we usually stay three minutes or less. And again, we can't have a back and forth. You don't take notes on your comment. Anybody?
I have a question.
First one.
How come you can't answer a question if we have a question?
Sherry's a parlor during, it sounds like it's another question.
During when?
Pardon me?
Right now. He just said that you can't go back and forth, but I have questions.
It's always been...
Because it's public comments, it's not question and answers, it's public comments. So if we can't answer it right now, we would take your name and number.
Oh, but if you can't answer, you will.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
If it's an easy one to answer, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so nice hand? My name's Orland Smith, I live in Green Ridge Estates, been there since '08. And I'm not a member of GEAR, and I do not own a food truck. But I got up Sunday morning, was reading social media, and I was furious, and so was my wife. I mean, literally furious. And when I looked at the video from this meeting from last month, and I heard somebody say that "we cannot let gear be in the park," I wanted to know who "we" are. It was referred to as "we can't." Who's "we"?
It was said in the video. I'd like to see that.
So...
Who's "we"?
I quoted it, I quoted it in my comment.
Yeah, I know, but I...
So who is "we"?
I said, when I first came here, I was, I was told, led to believe that, for some reason, the food trucks could not be on the property of, that is owned, you know, by the village. So I asked the attorney, I got an attorney's opinion, and he said, absolutely, we could. And I did relay that to Melissa, that we would love to have them in the park, that we would put them in the park.
I was really confused, I guess I don't remember, like, I mean, I saw the video, but I don't remember that part being about you saying, like, I thought that was like, if they don't have a permit, we can't have them because you said you want to make sure your bases are covered. That's why I was really confused coming in tonight about why that video, I guess I just remember that.
No, I would love to have them in the park, I would never say not to have them in the park.
Yeah, because it's good times.
That's what it said, matter of fact.
Well, I understand, I understand.
Matter of fact, it sounded like it was said, I, "we can't have," it sounded like I, "we can't."
I never said "we."
No.
No, the voice on Sherry's.
No, I'm telling you, I heard it, and it sounded like she said, "we can't have gear in the park."
Well, I'll take the...
And I wanted to know, who's "we"?
I just, I didn't understand.
It sounded more like, I can't have them there. So I'm starting to think that...
I would never say that.
I'm starting to think that whoever said it, if it was her or whoever, has decided that they don't want gear in this town at all.
No, it was never presented that way.
I think it was a misunderstanding.
I don't know, it's just, it's just way too fishy for me, and I'm not affiliated with these people.
I understand.
I'm just a person from the neighborhood, I pay my taxes, and I got on social media, and I started reading this crap.
I heard about social media. Particularly not on social media, I just made a Facebook page just for my business. But I do know it can get out of hand, and people say this, this, and this, I don't remember.
Well, that's why I'm here.
Yes, I understand that.
I want to know who we are.
But I want to go back and look at it.
Well, if I said it, I said it in error, and I apologize.
Forty-one.
Basically, this goes to gear.
Okay.
And gear wants to set up in our parks, and we cannot allow them to set up in our parks. So I really don't think this is going to be an issue, but we need to control and know who's out there.
Yeah, I don't think she meant it that way.
Yeah, that's another thing, she said that we have to control.
I say that.
I didn't like that one bad.
But if it's a gear, I don't think...
Let me add, let me add this.
But I've got to think from the attorney, this is they can't.
It has to do with insurance, insurance people and whatnot. Our insurance carrier comes around every couple of years, and all the buildings and... And I had, we wanted to go to the museum. We were talking about volunteers, and I asked a question, because we have people for flowers and work for us. And his question was, what do you do? He said, just, if you could take one form, one time, and say, "I volunteer for the..." Even volunteers for flowers and pickups, insurance companies want to know that you can be doing this, they don't want to know the dates. You go to the emergency room, and the village doesn't know you're here that day, then you have to pay for it and try and get reimbursement insurance, that's where it's at. But if you, if you call the, if your hospital calls and says, "Yeah, they volunteer for us."
See, I think you should use that as an example.
Well, insurance is never a certain thing.
Okay, but I only want to say one other thing. I really don't want to see gear in the park either. I want to see them downtown where they work. I enjoyed it downtown, people were coming in from the community, talking to each other back and forth.
I agree, I went.
I don't want them tucked away, I want it right there in town where it's been.
Well, I went, I've been going, and I went to the other stores because, you know, I went to Livy's Ice Cream, my friend Katie, we love it, I didn't have a problem with it, it was just those two businesses. And then we got a call, she got a call, and so it was just blown out of proportion.
So those two businesses, they're taxpayers, right?
No, they're not.
Oh, well, I'm a taxpayer.
They pay taxes.
I pay a lot of taxes. I live inside this village.
Yes, so do I.
Well, then you know like I know.
Yes, I do, and I live right around the corner from them.
That's all I got.
But I think the restaurants do pay taxes.
Yeah, they have to pay taxes, but they don't live here.
They pay taxes to the village.
Yes, I do.
Taxpaying is not the same as being a voter. The voters are who put this council together and call the shots. Just because you have the money and have a business does not give you the right to tell our community how to be run.
Yep, and there was only two, and I didn't agree with it.
But then why did you vote yex on the ordinance?
Because we have to have the ordinance, everybody around us has the ordinance.
But why didn't you table the ordinance then, to gather more information?
The ordinance has nothing to do with downtown village.
Absolutely, it does. We can't be, we can't be downtown.
Well, I went, we're going to take a look at it.
No, you already passed it, they're talking about the ordinance.
Well, it's two parts.
Yeah, it's not a permit.
It's done that way, it's not a two-part ordinance. Well, we haven't set the fee. We passed the ordinance.
I don't think, they're not concerned about the fee.
No, we're concerned about the ordinance.
But it's passed in two parts so that the fee and the forms can be changed, like with your comments, the...
That's not what they're asking.
That's not what we were told either.
Yeah.
We're told that once it's passed, this law, it cannot be changed, that's it, it's done.
Isn't there supposed to be a second reading of it?
Well, we tabled it, so we're going to take a...
You didn't take it.
We did table it, Sherry, we passed an ordinance.
Yeah, we did.
Can I give my official public comment?
Sure.
Please, okay. So it, first, I have two things. One, I wasn't going to talk about my comments from earlier, but it seems that we need to repeat some of the things that I had said in my comments. So basically, what we kind of don't understand is that Sherry gave us very clear indication that we had nothing to worry about, that nothing was going to happen to our events. We have no record, back and forth correspondence, our concerns, we have to defend ourselves, this and that, and it just kept coming back, that everything's going to be fine, it's just the safety and protocols and making things right. So when we, Marissa had a kid who had to go to the emergency room, we weren't able to fill in for her on that March 14th meeting, the meeting never got posted to the website. I reached out last week to Sherry to ask where that video was. She said it was loaded, but it never made it onto the website. And so on April 7th, last Thursday, just what, five days before this meeting, the, you know, hour and a half meeting was loaded. So that's when all of us became aware that apparently the council's understanding of the ordinance and Sherry Wilkerson's understanding and purpose of the ordinance are not on sync with each other. Because you are saying that this is not about...
We never meant to keep you out of the park.
Hang on, I understand, but you, I watched it several times, I've read the transcripts, I quoted in my minute, or my speech here, it's a five page, somebody says it's a five-page ordinance. Somebody says, "Sherry, can you please summarize what this says?" And Sherry goes into, "We were contacted by the chamber, there were a couple businesses who are, you know, concerned." And then she says, "All this is going to do is help us control where things, where these things can park." This is verbatim, I've double-checked it. Then she says, "Our thick-building restaurants have had issues with food trucks being outside of their restaurants." And then she kind of stumbles a little bit, but then says, "And our other businesses have too, with the trucks being in front of their businesses and limiting the foot traffic," I think were her words. That, I don't, I'm just paraphrasing that part. And then she says, "This is to keep the trucks a certain amount away from the businesses." And then she says a few more kind of stumbling things, and she, you can tell she goes to say, "Some things stops," and then she says, "Basically, it goes with gear, and gear wants to set up in our park, and we cannot let them set up in our park." There's no, hang on, hang on.
I think she meant...
Hold the comment, hang on, Sylvan, maybe flip that thing over. I got three. So, but what I'm saying is, is that there was nothing, there was, thank you, there it goes. There was nothing made clear after that, and you're saying maybe what she meant, and I think what she meant, which means that you're not even sure what she meant. So for you to unanimously vote for to nothing to, you know, to approve this ordinance, that it is going to affect us, it will 100% affect our participation in our village.
Can I comment?
Hang on. So, this is my real public comment, because there seemed to be confusion about what Sherry said she said and then what is on the record. So I... So I understand you guys are up here taking notes, you're doing all that stuff, it's very hard to do both at the same time, but I, I, I would recommend that you go back, you listen to the audio, she's right behind the camera, she's making comments. You hear, I think it's Jim Green, and what's her name?